Everyone, welcome to the Winchester.
Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Mariano Gulaboff, John Fallon, and Mike Bettencourt, and we're also joined by Acting Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We will start this meeting with Beth, with your report.
Sure. Thank you. So I just wanted to mention a few things quickly. There's several Board and Committee openings that are up on the town's website. The Board of Assessors, Affordable Housing Trust, Commissioners of Trust Funds, Seniors and Tax Committee, Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee, the EFPBC Personnel Board, and the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee. So I would encourage anybody who's interested to take a look at the town's website. These positions are closing sometime between May 9th and May 20th, so there's a little bit of time for folks who are interested to apply. And these positions will be viewed, for the most part, by the Select Board. Some are appointed by the town clerk as well. And then, just very quickly, construction updates. The town will be bidding the Woodside Road at Wildwood Street project in the next few weeks. That project includes the reconfiguration of the intersection at that location to reduce the amount of impervious area that's out there, tighten up the intersection, and slow vehicles down as we're turning from Wildwood Street onto Woodside Road. Swan Street Bridge Project, the work is complete. We were able to finish it up over school vacation, happy to report. So that bridge will hopefully not be closed for the foreseeable future. EverSource is continuing to work on Cross Street between Marion Street and Washington Street, and then also on Washington Street at the Abertona River Crossing. EverSource is continuing to also work along the 115 Project, along Bacon Street, and the Vinton Owen-Safe routes School Project. The contractors back out on site, and they should be finishing up work later this summer. As for upcoming construction projects, we expect to have our contractor out at the intersection of Church Street and Waterfield Road in the next few weeks, and that project will last probably six to eight weeks for construction. And I'm also happy to report that the contract will be out in the next few weeks at the transfer station, starting up work there. And also that our contractor has started work, mobilized to the site at the North Reservoir Dam. If you walk in that area, you've seen that there's quite a reduction in the water levels at the North Reservoir Dam as they pump things down to be able to start work on the dam repairs. And then, just a few quick community notes. We are having a listening session on Thursday, May 19th via Zoom for the town's transportation master plan. So I invite anybody who's interested in providing some feedback to the town on ways that we can improve the pedestrian, bike, and vehicular safety throughout town. And there's also a web tool that's available where residents can input your areas of concern or areas where you think we're doing a good job as well. And then, two other notes. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day is scheduled for May 7th at DPW from 9:00 AM to noon. And there's an Abertona River Cleanup Day on Saturday, May 14th from 9:00 AM to noon, starting at Town Hall Parking Lot. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Beth on that report?
Beth, I have a question about North Reservoir Dam.
Yeah.
Is there any spot for getting information on the progress or status of that for folks who are walking or running in the area?
Sure. So that area, the pedestrian closures will be in effect throughout the duration of construction. So what you see pretty much out there in terms of where pedestrians can't go will be continued. We do have, on the town's website, there's a project section where we do update various, provide updates about construction. Most of what you see will be kind of working within the limit of works that's already been kind of put out there. There will be trucks coming and going as we have to remove dirt from the area.
And that should finish up at the end of this year?
End of this year. Yep. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I just have one, Beth. On the 345 line with EverSource, I saw some emails about, like, an email list that they're creating. Has that been shared with, you know, at least like the Morocco School community?
That's a good, yeah, no, that's a good idea. I think there, I believe you can sign up for the email list on the EverSource's project website, but I can, I'm happy to get that information out to the schools.
Yeah, I think we should just get it out, especially to that area of town, and even maybe send a flyer to the businesses on Cross Street that they could sign up for that. Because I think that'll be a useful tool for people to get information. And maybe even that, if we could flyer that, that whole Cross Street neighborhood, that area, I think it would be useful for everyone just to know that.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Okay, moving on. Public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing
none, we will keep moving. Moving. Not move, not moving, moving. Next on the agenda is the Town Council RFP. I think everyone's been provided a copy of the draft RFP. And John, thank you for taking the lead on this. I didn't know if you wanted to start with...
Sure. We talked about this a month or two ago, about taking, looking at alternatives to County Council, and we viewed a half a dozen or eight RFPs from other communities and along with ours. I worked with Mark and Rich on it, and that's what we have is that product. And Mario took a look at his comments, and the goal was to solicit proposals from large firms and small firms who may then outsource it to specialists, but to make the pool a little bit bigger, give us a few more options for this go-around. We have a pretty tight timeframe, but I think that interested firms will, can live up to it.
Any questions or discussion on that RFP? Can all speak at once. Is everyone comfortable with the current draft as presented?
I only had a few comments, but they were mostly just spell out SB. It puts Select Board itself SB. I mean, just, yeah, nothing substantive.
Okay. So I think the goal would be, if we vote this tonight, to get it out as soon as possible and give people time to respond.
How is this going to be issued, the RFP? Are we going to advertise it? Is it, how's it going out?
That is a good question.
Okay. You're looking like, yeah, wasn't a good question. I thought that was a good question. I was pretty sure it was.
No, I would expect to go to MIA, to the, and then go to the state procurement websites, COMBIs, and the Mass Central Register, and then we can look at some other sources in addition to those three.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if anyone, you know, I've seen them advertise in Mass Lawers Weekly as well, if anybody, that's a source to put it out there. But I think those are all good sources. Anyone have any other suggestions? Hearing no other discussion about our RFP, if we want to have a motion on that, someone wants to make a motion?
So I move we release an RFP for the Winchester Town Council.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Great. Okay, next on the agenda, we have 87-89 Cross Street, 40B. I think we have some people in attendance tonight. If you want to come join us at the table.
Should I dial up?
We're going to get our Town Planner Brian Sekely on the phone as well. You guys could both introduce yourselves, I think, just for the record.
Mario Cavino.
Mario for joining us.
And John Survier from the Housing Partnership Board.
Thanks, John. Thanks for coming.
Welcome to Verizon Wireless. The number you dialed has been changed.
Ooh.
No.
So is there something we should know about Brian?
I only dialed two numbers.
Did I give you the wrong number?
Just give us a second to get him on the phone.
Basement's new basement slab.
Hello?
Hey, Brian.
How's it going, Beth?
Good. You're on speaker here in the Select Board Room.
Well, hello, everyone.
Hi. Brian, are you celebrating Cinco de Mayo already?
Um, yes. If Cinco de Mayo is watching a swarm of lacrosse kids just go around the ball like some type of, like, weird magnetized, you know, video game.
Sounds lovely.
All effort, no skill.
Yeah, yeah. Pretty much rental money there, as usual.
All right. Well, thanks, Brian, for allowing us to call you and joining this meeting. I don't know, Mariano, if you, no, Mariano, Mario, if you want to start or...
I don't know where to start. I came prior to the last board, and Beth wanted to wait until the new board comes in to make a decision on the project. So I'm here to listen to what we're going to do.
Okay. So I know we have two new board members. They weren't at the last meeting. They may have been watching remotely. But I didn't, you know, I can give everyone the opportunity to ask questions or give their thoughts. And John, if you have, I know that, I think we've seen, I think, has everyone seen the email from the Housing Partnership Board?
Yeah. Let me, I mean, I would like to make just kind of two sets, brief sets of comments. I mean, for the old members, and the new members. I mean, with respect to housing first, and then I'll comment a little bit on process and procedures, because the term 40B is scary. No one knows what friendly 40B means in there. From the housing perspective, and I won't give you a quiz, but remember back to Diagresis Planning Board Presentation to Town Meeting. The town needs rental housing. Compared to other adjacent towns and similar towns, we have a lower percentage of rental housing than any of them. So rental housing is good. Second, we need a range of housing types, housing sizes, multifamily sizes, that are kind of in the middle. And so it would be great if we had more two-family houses. The Cambridge Street, 96 units, and the River Street, 147 units of rental housing, they provide, they're super valuable. But we also need housing that's nine units, which is what this is, 16 units, 25 units, 36 units, that are kind of mid-size housing developments. So the Housing Partnership Board thinks this is a great opportunity from that perspective. And then, the third point I would just comment is on income level. Under the 40B, and what Mario was proposing, is that 20% of the units will be affordable to households earning 60% of the Boston area median income. That's roughly $64,000. I did some quick checking today. You know, 15% of Winchester residents or households are earning that level of income or lower. So there's a need for that kind of housing to serve Winchester people and, as well as regionally. So on those three elements, you know, this project makes a lot of sense. Let me just comment on the, one of the things I distributed was a 15-point summary. DHCD, if you really want, they have a set of regulations and guidelines that are probably 200 to 300 pages long. So online, you're welcome to read. What this does is, in essence, boil the idea of a friendly 40B down into 15 steps. We're really at steps one and two. And step one is where the developer talks with and describes the project to DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. Step two is where they contact the municipality. That's happened a couple times. Step three is a big one. And the developer prepares a, what's known as a local initiative program application and a set of attachments, and submits that to the Department of Housing and Community Development. In there, that would be signed by both Richard Mucci in his capacity as Chair of the Select Board, myself as Chair of the Housing Partnership Board. Once the HCD reviews and accepts that and determines the application is complete, then the town will have an opportunity to comment on that application, on that. And so there's an additional opportunity to comment. And then, the HCD will issue what they call, what's called a project eligibility letter. That will then give the developer permission to request a hearing with the zoning board of appeals. That can be a six-month hearing, up to a six-month hearing. That's where the traffic impact studies could be peer-reviewed. The design can be peer-reviewed. One of the things that's different about a chapter 40B from a normal development is the financial pro forma is a public document. And so that pro forma can be reviewed by the town. It can be peer-reviewed if you want. And there's opportunity for everyone in the community, anyone in the community, you know, to comment on that. And that's, hearing process is laid out, so it kind of goes topic by topic in there. And then, the ZBA would make the final decision whether to approve the project. So really, this is, we're right at the beginning of this process. And from my perspective, the approval is, you're not signing off on all the details of the project. The Housing Partnership Board had some suggested design changes regarding housing for disabled persons. You know, there's a lot of opportunity in the coming months to work with the development team. So I just want to make sure that, you know, if there's a motion tonight, this is not a motion to issue a building permit. That's a ways downstream.
We don't have that power, unfortunately. No, it makes sense, John. I appreciate you summit, first of all, summarizing the 200-plus pages into something compact, something we can easily follow. I really appreciate that. And I appreciate you being here to summarize. Brian, I didn't know if you had anything to add, or if we can just open it up to the floor for discussion?
I was just going to add one very small thing. In fact, the housing production plan that was kind of put forward by the Select Board in 2018, and I would think in conjunction with Housing Partnership Board, and to an extent the planning board, but really, this is a Select Board exercise. And there, the main goal, there were two main goals of the housing production plan. One was very specific to get in safe harbor and to stay in safe harbor. And just for those, there's a couple different ways to get there. Everyone knows the 10%, that if 10% of your housing stock, you can get safe harbor, meaning that you can push away 40Bs that are inappropriate. But you can also get it if you build, in our particular case, 40 units on the, on the subset I was talking to earlier, 80 years, or 80 units in two years. So this was one of the goals that the Select Board had. What I wanted to mention briefly is that some people said, well, with nine units on that SHI, you know, is that really, is that really anything? That's not going to do anything for us. And I just wanted to point out, just what I've been telling people and what I believe, is that that's, you know, a quarter of the way to the 40, or, you know, around a quarter of the way that we need to the 40. And the idea is that these types of smaller projects that are intermixed throughout town tend to be better well-received compared to the 100 and 150 unit projects that are just more disruptive. So I'm sorry that took so long, but I just wanted to say that briefly. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. So at this point, I'd open it up to discussion. Most board members?
Let's take a few, what are the sizes, you know, smart, some elevations?
About 1,700 square foot. Square foot, it's three bedrooms. You know, a garage with a partial basement below.
Are they all three bedrooms, or are they...
Yes, all three, all three bedrooms.
I mean, to me, you know, I think, you know, if we're the start of the process, I think, and I read some of the neighbors' concerns, and I think the process would take care of a lot of those concerns and address those concerns. If we're just a start, I mean, certainly, you know, this is in line with what we're trying to do in town, as I think Brian was indicating. So, I mean, I'd certainly be in favor of moving this along to the next steps.
Yeah, I mean, without getting into the design, because, again, that's not for us to decide, right? That's for the ZBA to work with. So I'm not going to get into that. But I think, you know, we need affordable housing. We need affordable housing of different types, not just big apartment buildings, right? So this is, to me, this is a great project. So, yeah, absolutely. I'm in favor of moving forward.
I've actually asked this before as a neighbor in the area, but I do think for us, and as it moves forward, and, John, I think you mentioned step eight around traffic, is that that location is right next to a crosswalk that is a very busy intersection and is not for folks who live on this side of the crosswalk. It's not the best crosswalk in the world. So just being cognizant of that as, as an issue around traffic, when there are going to be, you know, nine to 18 cars kind of regularly directly at that intersection could be unnerving to people in the area.
Yeah. I mean, you can't mention Cross Street without someone mentioning traffic. And Beth might be the leader in that. So, I mean, there are traffic issues on Cross Street. Fortunately, I don't drive it in the AM or the PM peak. You know, it's a difficult street to walk on or to walk alongside. So, you know, that's going to be an important issue. And, you know, I mean, there'll be a traffic impact study that can be reviewed. It can be coordinated with the work that Tool is doing on the other Cross Street improvements, so that the appropriate mitigation steps can be designed in. And, I mean, it was a big issue on the River Street project.
Yeah, no, I think, point well made at the end. I think certainly the process is designed to flush those issues out and address them. So, other thoughts?
Yeah, I was just saying, I mean, I think it's a great project. And as Brian was saying, I think when we developed the housing production plan, a lot of the residents were looking for projects that are this size. And I like that there's a deeper level of affordability here. I know in the Housing Partnership Board meetings, we did talk about disability access being one of our goals as well. So, again, as Mariano said, the design isn't really up to us, but some of the policy objectives are. So I think, you know, certainly makes sense for us, and the more that we can meet some of those, those goals are helpful. Certainly, traffic is a concern. But, you know, with less units than one of the bigger projects, you know, I'm hoping that this is not going to be a six-month process in front of the ZBA. I mean, it's, we've had this in front of us for a while. We've seen it. I know the neighbors, the Partnership Board has talked about it. If there's a way for us to accelerate that process, or at least help, then, you know, I think that would, would make sense here. So I think that the impact is less than a River Street or a Cambridge Street, so.
Yeah, I think, I didn't check this detail in the DHCD regulations, but I suspect their wording is up to six months. And so what the ZBA cannot do is take a project and then take two and a half years to review it and make a decision. So they've got a maximum period of time. And, I mean, I agree that...
Yeah, this one seems designed to move. So that's why, and I think that maybe that will incentivize other developers with projects like this to say, like, hey, you know, this was nine or 10 units or 15, and I got it moving faster than, you know, Cambridge Street. I mean, I don't even remember when we, you know, approved Cambridge Street.
Yeah, the key characteristic of, I mean, there's kind of a lowercase friendly 40B, and this is an uppercase friendly 40B. But the key characteristic of the friendly 40B is that, just like on other projects, the developer works collaboratively and cooperatively with the town. And it's not a contentious relationship. You're trying to forge a positive working relationship. River Street was a, mostly a lowercase friendly 40B, in that it really followed very much a traditional review and approval process for the town. Cambridge Street was more of a traditional 40B project. It wasn't contentious on the part of, well, on the part of some people, because it was appeal. But, you know, they followed the same process, but the River Street was designed to be much more cooperative. I'd anticipate that this is going to be, you know, even more cooperative, in part because it's smaller. But that's what going the DHCD route will ensure that.
Well, let's hope so. So, yeah, thank you both for being here. Any other comments or discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none? If you want to make a motion, someone?
Yeah, are we, so what exactly would we be moved to?
Brian, do you have any guidance on a motion?
Something like initiating the LIP, the co-sponsoring of the LIP application.
All right. I move that we co-sponsor the initiating of the LIP application for Mario Cavino for the 87 to 89 Cross Street, 40B.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Great. Thank you both for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. You can go back to lacrosse now.
Does it make sure there's a LIP process and a local initiative process, LIP, that's all?
Bye, bye.
Okay. Have a good night, everybody.
Bye, Brian.
So is LIP, is Brian playing soccer or lacrosse?
His son's playing lacrosse.
So you can leave that there. At six, I have to go drive children around. So if you can dial me in when I leave.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I sent you my cellphone, an email.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
Beth, do you want to go through the Waterfield Street temporary crosswalk?
Yep. So there's a plan. Hopefully, you can all see it in your packet. As the contractor for the MBTA started work out there, they've made it clear that they're going to need to close the sidewalk underneath Waterfield Road Bridge, alternating sides, one side at a time, for various durations throughout the course of the project. And we had a meeting out there with the police chief and the safety officer and DPW director and all, everybody. And we felt like it really wasn't safe to, given the number of pedestrians that walk through here, given the number of people that go to the Town Common, and given the number of kids who are walking through here to go to McCall. We didn't, we didn't think it was safe for, for people to be redirected to the crosswalk at the top of Waterfield Road, because the reality is that kids aren't going to get to that point where the sidewalk is closed and turn around and go back. They're just going to cross the street in a unsafe location. So the MBTA hired a traffic engineer who determines on this plan, which is shown here, that a crosswalk between the Waterfield lot and the Town Common, this location, would be safe, adequate site, distance and visibility. It requires a removal, a temporary removal of four parking spaces, and the MBTA would strike this. So it's my recommendation of the board move forward, authorizing this temporary.
So is that temporary removal for two years, temporary removal?
I'm hoping, fingers, they said they thought it would be there for the duration. I hope that they'll be able to finish the work on the southern section that at least impacts the sidewalk.
Right.
And that, that maybe during the workday, they might have to close the sidewalk, but the rest of the time, they'd be able to open it. So I'm hopeful that it's not going to be needed for the full two years. I don't think anybody wanted to make that promise at this point, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I did bring this up at the chamber, oh, sorry.
No, no, I, you, I'm sure you're going to say the same thing.
I did bring this up to the chamber meeting, board meeting yesterday. Actually, Mike from Diagostinos is there. And they understand that this is necessary, and that people cross there anyways. And it's a high-volume area, and it's, you know, it's a high-traffic area, walking area for kids to go to McCall. And so they seemed okay with the temporary change. But they did ask that question, if it was for the duration of the project. So if we could, you know, flush that out and maybe get...
I did ask the question, and they said it was. But like I said, I'm hopeful that as they start going, in the next year, maybe we'll be able to scale back.
You know, and sometimes instead of, I think, instead of having them tell us this is the way it is, we say, well, how, you know, we'd like it to be this way. So what are you going to do about getting it to be this way, which is like having it a year? Because it's easy for them to say, hey, it's two years. No, we want it to be a year. We're accommodating it. You know, and I know you guys have spent a $40 million, but we need this back.
Yeah, no.
I think that's fair.
Well, we'll definitely push them as things are going.
And will there be, there's also a detail officer out there at that... And will there be, um, there's also a detail officer out there at that, is that?
So I think, depending on the scope of the work, they'll have police officers out here. Um, and it could change from day to day. So.
Any other questions? Do you have anything, Mike?
No, no, thank, no, it's, um, you know, the, um, it's a high-volume area. It's, it's kind of chaos down there, to be honest with you. Um, and so, um, happy they were doing something because there's, uh, uh, still a lot, a lot of kids, um, out there in the common, even with the construction, really hasn't deterred much. So, um, so I'm glad that we're doing something.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, if you want to make a motion.
Um, move that we approve the temporary crosswalk at Waterfield Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? No. Great. All right. Um, so next up, uh, so Warren articles. Uh, we have, um, two Warren articles that we have not discussed yet, um, 26 and 27. Um, on Monday, they will hear, I mean, we're gonna finish town meeting, I guess, on, on Monday. Uh, so drink, drink your coffee. Uh, and, uh, so just, just an update on, uh, the Sports Court article, Article 18. Uh, there is a new, uh, uh, an updated, uh, plan that will be going out likely tomorrow, uh, to, uh, neighbors yourselves and everyone that incorporates the neighbors' requests for changes. Uh, and considering the ADA ramp, ADA walkway now goes to the parking lot rather than onto Marshall Road. Uh, and there's some changes to the retaining wall and, and it shows that the pickleballs have, pickleball court has been eliminated. So, uh, that will go out tomorrow to everybody. Um, but, um, you know, um, just so everyone is aware of that. Um, and then in terms of 26 and 27, um, I guess I'll, I'll, you know, we need to discuss this and, and every time we try to discuss it, we get bogged down with, uh, visitors or, or, or some other issues. So I thought we might take a few minutes tonight, uh, just to, to go through, um, and see if there's a consensus of the board for a position on those articles. Um, I think I'll start with 20, I'll go backwards. I'll start with 27, um, because I don't, um, I think that's less controversial, um, just in, in my read of, of town meeting and, and what I've seen out there. Um, so, you know, um, I think, you know, 27 is to prepare, is, is needed to prepare that, uh, the Parkhurst area for, um, for, uh, the modular classrooms, uh, and to get it, that design going. And they needed that now so that they have them in time, uh, for the project, uh, for Lynch swing space, um, requirements in the project. So, I mean, I would, I'm inclined to, to be in favor of 27. I think it's, you know, vital to the, to Lynch project. I didn't know if anyone, there's discussion on that or if anyone was opposed to that one.
Makes sense to me.
Makes sense.
Okay. So if we want to have a motion to favorable action on that one?
Yep. I move the select board votes favorable action on Article 27.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. So that's you, none of us. Um, I'm gonna get dialed in. Okay. On, um, Mariana, you want me to wait till you, I'll wait till you get that.
That's fine.
Okay. So 20, that leaves us with 26. So I just didn't know if, um, if there was discussion around 26, uh, for people tonight.
Yes, uh, 26, I'm not, uh, in favor of. I, I just have listened and I just can't still get my mind around a $6 million.
Please ring the number 46177086.
You have a good message, Brian.
You made it outside yet?
Let us know when you're outside the building. Give us a call back.
No, we were calling it when he was in the stairwell, on the way out.
So we'll start over. Sorry, John, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, it's fine, it's fine.
You're here.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We just left you a good message. So, you know, all, all your, all your friends here on the select board wish you, you know, wish you a happy Cinco de Mayo. What we just called. You must be in the stairwell. We keep getting you in the stairwell. Uh, can you hear us okay? Mariana, can you hear us okay?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay, good. All right. Go ahead, John. Uh, you were gonna say something.
So I was, I, I said I'm, I'm not for supporting 26. I have listened to, um, different presentations and I could never get the nu, numbers to add up or the number of people to add up or the square footage required. So until I get a better understanding of this, I, I can't support it. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. Others?
So I have, um, I mean, I think, you know, I, I don't like how it's funded from the operating budget, but at the same time, I, Parkhurst just worth $12 million. And so if this doesn't pass, the administration goes back into Parkhurst. So I see it from a long-term financial perspective, the option is the administration either goes into a $6 million value or they go into a $12 million value. So spending the $6 million helps us unlock $12 million in value, then, then I'm in favor of that. So given all of those assumptions, I'm in favor of it. My concern is if that's someone increase risk, if we can, if we cannot unlock the value of Parkhurst. But I, I think that's a low risk, but it's a risk to keep in mind.
And Mariana, just, just, um, in your analysis, the, the $12 million you're citing, is that the, is that from the rental income? Is that where you're coming up with that figure of $12, $12 million value?
Uh, I mean, that's what I saw the, um, I saw the, uh, that it was assessed, right?
That was their estimated price that they were to sell it.
I thought the estimated price was $7 million if they sold it.
Oh, no. Uh, value as rental, $11,785. Sale was 6.5 or 8.3.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so all of the values are more than, well, Article 26, it's even the lowest possible value, but it could be up to $11.00, almost $12 million.
Okay. Great. Anyone else?
I, I think it's challenging that we're, uh, you know, kind of debating the schools' committee. The school committee is renovation of a, of a piece of property. It's, it's still really unclear the value in doing the carriage house for, uh, central office versus why central office, it seems like is, is not under MS, um, MSBA to build it into a school, but, you know, still choosing not to build it into a project where, uh, you know, we could be more efficient or signal to a community like Lynch that there's a, a strong commitment from central office to, to be there and to see what's happening in those schools.
So are you saying that you'd like to see it incorporated into the school project or at least?
I, I, it feels like that option has been sort of removed from the table and it's hard to weigh, you know, we're, we're either juggling, uh, we have like an apple and a, I don't know, a bunch of grapes or something.
We're not gonna judge you on your fruit.
What is so different? Uh, but we, we seem to be comparing, um, you know, there's probably a, a number of different options and it seems like it's a forced choice to either, uh, move forward on, on the carriage house or, uh, almost like suffer the consequences in a way. And I think there, there probably are more long-term creative options to implement a central office that is more, better suited for office space versus, uh, you know, central office employees taking up classroom, potential classroom space for whatever that future could be. Which is, to sum it up, I'm still confused why these are the options.
Yeah, I think you raised some good, good points in theory and at least I think you summarized it a little bit more eloquently than I probably could. But I, I think all directions during this process have led to the carriage house. And for me, I think there are other options out there and possibly better options to explore that aren't as risky, uh, given our financial position and, um, you know, and, and how we're funding this. Um, I think this is a, a good conversation to have. I'd like to see central office have a permanent home. Um, but I think, you know, to, to rush it with, and tie it into this project, um, when there are other options out there for, for temporary, um, space or or temporary, um, measures, um, you know, and I think, you know, I think we've heard that phrase that Frank will get creative, uh, a couple of times at different meetings through, uh, for Jay or, or Chris, um, and when they've joined us. You know, I think we can get creative, uh, during the Lynch project to allow the Lynch community to have that space, uh, up at Parkhurst for swing space and, and, and really make it, uh, the Lynchy community that it needs to be during this, this disruption. And, um, I think during that time, we can continue to explore, um, other options, uh, for, for a permanent home for central office. And I'm not going to sit here and list out what those other options are, but, you know, I think there's a lot on the table. I mean, there's, um, you know, there's the Mystic School, there's, uh, that, you know, we don't have a long-term plan for. Um, there's, you know, at least, you know, temporarily, we can rent space, um, you know, during the Lynch project. Um, I mean, there's some quotes out there. I'm not sure I agree with the, um, what, what E F P V C and Chris have put together for, um, you know, rental quotes. I don't, I mean, my analysis is that they're, they're not that high and I think we can get a suitable space for them temporarily. Um, but I think, uh, you know, to Anthea's point, I think there are, uh, you know, there are other options out there. Um, you know, and, and I would feel a lot better, um, you know, making a decision about Parkhurst and then, you know, sort of having, being closer to that gain, whether we sell it, whether we, uh, rent it out, uh, and then using that funding, uh, to, to fund some type of permanent home for, uh, central office. But, uh, at this point, I think there's just too much speculation for me to support this. Um, I'm also very concerned. Um, you know, I think our staff does a great job. Uh, Stacy, um, Beth and Mark, they've put a tremendous amount of effort in, uh, to, to forecasting, um, our financial, uh, picture. Uh, and, um, you know, I just, I just don't, I, I'm concerned of what a project like this and how it would restrict, uh, us going forward in the next couple of years, um, with its current funding mechanism. And I think at the end of the day, it will limit, you know, greater needs of capital improvements that are out there in the community that, you know, I think the capital planning committee has identified. So, you know, I think at this point, I, I would not be in favor of it either.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, I mean, I would agree. I mean, I think there's been, um, consistently many more questions than answers. And even when I watch the school committee meetings, they have the same questions that we have. And, um, it seems strange. I know, uh, the town manager had sent a bunch of questions. We just didn't get responses to. So, um, it has seemed from the beginning like, um, the goal was to, uh, even develop Lynch in a way that would steer, steer everything towards the carriage house being the option for central office. And having a, uh, a permanent location for central office is, uh, um, certainly a policy priority that the schools have identified, the town has identified, but, um, I don't think it rises above other, um, policy priorities at this time. Lynch is number one. When we talked about, um, Lynch, uh, a couple of years ago, we talked about doing a debt exclusion override, um, to fund it, uh, um, and also put on a debt exclusion for the, the central office, um, located at Lynch. So, uh, we first heard in October that that was not possible because of the wellfields. Well, we found out that wasn't true, right? So, uh, and then it, you know, we were going to, uh, keep, uh, Lynch for, uh, the swing space. Could have been another location for, um, the central office to be there temporarily. Um, certainly rental space for tempor, you know, for, um, the central office is a possibility as well. I don't think it's prohibitively expensive from what I've seen. Um, so, and I don't think kind of putting a pause on where central office goes, um, permanently, uh, precludes us from, um, you know, doing something, uh, in the future, um, permanently. So, but I'd rather see it on the other end of Morocco. So, I mean, I see Lynch, Morocco, central office. That's the order for me. And frankly, um, I think we have to have a real discussion about funding, uh, Morocco sooner than later. And, um, when we look at the cost and escalation of, um, these buildings, you know, we did Vincent Owen for, uh, 30 million, um, you know, in, uh, 2014. We paid 19 on that. Um, this is going to be an $80 million building, right? So, um, just a few years later. So, um, what's Morocco going to be? You know, I mean, it's just, it's going to be as much as the high school, right? So, um, there, there are real risks here and, um, we need to focus on putting the money towards the kids and accessing the curriculum. And in any other community, central office, um, it bounces around, right? Because everyone has a sense that the kids are the priority. And I think that's where Dr. Evans was beforehand and why, you know, she put this off is because, uh, you know, it's, um, a, um, it's a lesser of a priority certainly than, than anything else. So, um, yeah, I mean, I, I haven't gotten answered to a lot of questions. Um, and a lot of the answers that I've kind of found along the way haven't, um, uh, haven't really added up. And so I can't think of a worse funding option either, um, than for us to, uh, put, you know, put debt service in, uh, funding that from our, our, uh, operating budget. I mean, it's just not something that we do and, um, you know, not something certainly that, um, AAA bonded communities do. So, um, worried about the risk, worried about our priorities. And the other big piece of it is, I don't think this is the best, uh, outcome for central office long-term. There's no s, school committee, um, meeting room in there. There's not space for professional development. Um, it's not central, you know? So, I mean, we're also, um, gonna be putting more parking there and taking up a lot of green space that is part of the, you know, really the, the beauty of that, that location. So, uh, I, I think we've done a, um, a great job preserving the Sanborn House. I think that was, uh, a great public-private partnership. It looks beautiful. Uh, as far as historic preservation, I think that's, that's done. This has been, you know, on the books for 20 years, people have been trying to raise money to save this carriage house. And I think there's a reason. It's, it's, um, it's n, not as valuable, uh, relative to, um, what we would have to spend. And when we, when you look at the price again on the carriage house from the, uh, the facilities master plan, uh, again, you know, that came out in 2017 at $3 million. It's now $6 million, right? So, um, you know, there, there's a question of value there. Um, so, uh, again, I think I've made my position clear along the way, but, you know, this seems like it's a bad, um, bad option for the town and, um, for the district.
Anyone else? Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing no other discussion, I, I didn't know if anyone wanted to make a motion, uh, on Article 26 for this evening.
So, would be, uh, just say something. I haven't decided yet. I'm gonna vote on 26, so I'm gonna abstain from a vote. I said, like I said, from a financial point, to me, um, it makes a lot more sense that a permanent home costs $6 million instead of $12 million. And that's the option that's being presented. If Article 26 passes, the central office costs $6 million. If Article 26 doesn't pass, the central office costs $12 million. So from that side, it makes sense, but I don't like that it's funded from operating. So I haven't decided. I'm going to vote.
Okay. Um, again, I'll just ask if anybody wants to make a motion and.
Yeah, I'll move that, uh, recommend unfavorable action on Article 26.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Um, so I guess, all those in favor of voting unfavorable action on Article 26, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
We do a roll call vote on that. Mario's on the phone.
That's right. Sorry, Mariana's on the phone.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess I'll do a roll call vote. Uh, John?
Yes.
Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Mariano?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Anthea?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. Thank you. Um, I think, do we, that's all the Warren articles we need to talk about. I think we've talked about everything else at this point.
So I think the only one is the, was it 34?
We did, we did the person, we did the personnel board. So I think we're.
The only one is the, like, the last minute.
You don't have the motion yet.
Right. So, um, that could be brought to the table.
All right.
So that's the assesses to reduce tax.
Yeah. All right. So we'll, uh, we'll take that up when we have the motion available. Uh, at this point, uh, we did have two other items on the agenda. Um, select board committee assignments and summer meeting schedule. Um, I'm gonna table the committee assignments until we're all here. I know, um, Mike needs to leave soon as well. Um, so I think when we're all in person, we could talk about that. Um, but just summer meeting schedule, if, uh, you could let Patty know if you have any planned vacations, um, you know, so that we make sure we schedule a meeting while you're on vacation. Uh, that would be great. Um, you know, I think the goal might be to try to have, you know, one meeting in July and one meeting in August if possible. Um, and just have one. And just have one heavy meeting in both months, if possible. If, if it's not, that's okay. But just to give everyone a break, I know everyone's working really hard with these special town meetings and town meeting. You know, we've had a lot of meetings lately. So, and we're going to have a lot in June as well. So I think we'll give everyone a breather in June and July and kind of regroup, I mean, July and August and kind of regroup. We also have the ability only till July 15th at this point to meet via Zoom. I don't know if that will change. We'll have to see if that gets extended. But that's another option as well.
I just wanted to mention for the June, we had two regular meetings scheduled, one for June, it's a Thursday, June 2nd, and the other one for June 27th. According to the R F P for the Town Council, we'll also need to set up meetings for the week of June 13th to do the interviews. So I just wanted to get that on everybody's radar.
Yep.
Anyone in special town meeting?
June 6.
June 6.
Okay, so. So let's just take July and August.
I said I'm going to reward you with this, all this hard work. You're going to be rewarded with a, a light July and August. So.
No, we know there's.
I mean, it's just, we have a lot going on.
Graduation is June 3rd, by the way.
I'm sorry, what?
It's going to be graduation, high school graduation is June 3rd. So that's going to be a busy week.
Yeah, and town day.
Yep. Does anyone have, do you have a senior, Mariano?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We could talk about that. I didn't know if anybody has.
June 6 is fine, and June 2 is fine. It's just June 3 is out of, yeah.
Well, June 2 might not be ideal either, you know, for, if we want to.
Yeah, we could talk about it, Mariano. If, if that's not ideal for you, we can work, you know, we can figure something out. But I just, I thought it was, we have, you know, the special town meeting coming up, that's 6. So we'll, we'll work on it. And I think the last thing we need to do tonight is just vote the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda published for the May 5 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Well, I think we'll conclude there. We'll stop. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Thank you, Mariano, for, for jumping on the, the call. And, and I guess a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? Or second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Great.
Thanks, Mariano.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, WinCam.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, good luck with the water town.